School Zones.
School Zones. Mr. Ferris is here to provide information on this topic. We did receive a petition earlier in the year related to the school zone on 3040 for the Harmon Campus. So staff made a decision to step back and look at this item and take it to the T- Board for review. And Mr. Ferris is, we'll walk you through that process that we followed.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Council. I will do point out tonight, we have Mr. Larry Williams with LISD present. I believe there's some members, some citizens here that were part of petition, if I can get them to raise their hand. Martha, are you here? Martha's back here. Some other citizens are here. Also, I have our graduate traffic engineer present, Mr. Kevin Nims, and assistant city engineer Jeff Kelly helping me out. Solomon had prepared this, but he has a different family, so I'm filling in. As city manager Donna Barron pointed out, we did receive the petition for the Harmon Campus. I'll give you a little history on Killian, Kilo, and Harmon, because we've had some change in the last year or two in what's happening out there. Historically, the city of Louisville, and this predates me, did not want to place school zones on state highways, namely 1171, 121 back in the day when other sites were talked about, and some on 3040. But we did have some different things going on with Killian Middle School, that's out on 544, has Independence Elementary School, that was added in December of 2008. Originally, we'll talk about that in a minute, that campus did not meet warrant because there was no crossing there, there was no signal. Once the signal got in, and we were able to warrant some crossings there, then the school zone got put in. What was put in initially was a school warning zone, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But Killian Middle School does have a school zone out there on 544, and that's a middle school with the elementary. Kilo, down on Summit, has a school zone on it, runs significantly in front of the school. You have a train crossing, a track there with the crossing. You have significant residential on the west side, and you have crossing guards there. And again, it was placed there, it's a ninth and 10th grade campus on Summit, which is a city road. Harmon, out on 3040, was a ninth and 10th grade campus. We added the school zone for Duncan along the western side. That school, the Walton Zone's been in place. Duncan is the city street. The zone is similar to the one that was established on Valley Parkway, adjacent to LHS. Since we had the request, we went ahead and looked at Louisville High School. Maybe it's time to just take a step back and look at our policy and our direction that we've been down the road for decades of not doing it. So we included Louisville High School. There is a school zone on Valley Parkway that runs along the west side of the campus, was put in in '93, and basically is in strategic cross placement there, 200 feet in advance of the previous mid-block crossing in the southern driveways for the bus pickups and drop-offs. That has changed since the new school has been demolished and reconstructed, and they did a great job on that, by the way, and redid some of the driveways. So we probably need to take a little harder look at that. But anyway, I wanted to point out that that crossing was there on Valley Parkway. There was no school zone on 1171, but we did want to take a look at that. What we're gonna look at real quick is our state laws regarding school zones, our practices of survey cities and what they do. We're gonna look at that Harmon Campus history, pedestrian survey and accident data. We're gonna look at LHS. We're looking at impact on public safety. We're looking at historic practices. We're looking at a lot of design options and some recommendations for you. So that's where we're going. Starting out on what our codes, our state laws, we operate at Texas Manual of Uniform Control, Texas Manual of Traffic Control Devices. And basically, they set a lot of rules for cities to go by when you're establishing school zones. So they're basically saying you should have a school zone where pedestrian traffic crosses a roadway at a school campus or where vehicle or pedestrian traffic creates an unusual pattern on routes to or from school campuses. I will note at the bottom that they start to give you some design guidelines by saying, reduce school speed limits should be, when you're dealing with that, you should at least consider 200 feet in advance of the school grounds, at school crossing, or other school-related activities, 200 feet either side of that. However, if the speed limit, 200 feet may need to be increased if the reduced zone speed limit is 30 miles per hour or higher. And we're gonna see some data on that that'll make a little bit more sense in a minute. Again, the manual outlines, this section mainly is dealing with school warning zones or signage that indicate you're coming into a school warning zone. And so there's tools to do that, not necessarily establishing a school zone, but a school warning zone. We did this for Killian before we got the warrant, before we could do the pedestrian counts, who are actually in place crossing 544. The next section talks about the 85th percentile speed. Basically says, if you're below 50 miles per hour, you can reduce the speed limit by 15. So in other words, you can go from a 50 mile an hour zone down to 35. If you're at 55, then you can reduce it by 20. But if you're above 55, then you have to start doing buffer zones, where you step it down, where you can't just slam from 60 miles an hour down to 35. You have to reduce your speed signs, then get into your speed zone, into your school zone for that. And I think you've, y'all probably seen some examples around the metroplex as you travel, certain things, especially in rural areas. If we're on a highway that's 70 miles an hour, you'll see it go down to 55, down to 50, then all of a sudden, you're in a school zone. So that's what that's talking about. We don't have that case here.
Eric?
Yes, sir.
In this transition down to the lowest speed limit above 55 or 60, the lowest that you can transition down to is 35? Is that correct?
If you're at, again, I'll kind of step back through it. If you're at 50 miles per hour, you can go down by 15 miles. So if you're at 35. If you're at 55 miles per hour, you can go down by 20. If you're over, if you're greater than 55, then you have to step it down to buffer zone. And we don't have the case on any one of our roads in play here. But you'd have to step it down to what, Kevin? You'd probably go down to a 50, maybe to a 45, and then deal with your school zone after that. Does that answer your question, Council?
What I'm referencing is the last sentence in that paragraph. Any roadway with an 85th percentile, da-da-da-da, greater than 55 miles per hour requires a buffer zone to transition down to 35.
Yes. So what you would have is you'd have a posted speed limit at 55, then you'd have another reduction of speed, probably down to 50 or 45, and then you would, then you would have a distance. In other words, you're backing up your distance entering into that school zone. Then you'd have a school zone at 35 miles per hour. Did I explain that right, Kevin?
That was my, that was, yes, that's for... That was my question, is that would be the lowest in that situation?
In that situation, yes, sir.
35 would be?
Yeah, neither one of these schools would be impacted by that.
I understand that.
Yes, good question.
But Oliver, still at 35 miles per hour is the lowest. If you're at 15, go 15 down to 35. If you're at 55, you go 20 down to 35. If you're above that, then you have to do it in steps, but you can still go down to 35. Correct? If you're at 50, you can go down 15, which will get you 35. If you're at 55, you can go down 20, that gets you to 35.
If you're at 40, you can go down to 25.
Correct.
When I said 50, 55.
Yes, that's correct. Okay, moving around along. This is important. On Tech Dot Roadways, they establish their school zones based on, based on where pedestrians are moving, either through controlled intersections, crosswalks, and the set and the other. They really do not look at vehicle traffic control as it passes by the school. Also, Tech Dot's going to look at it, and they're gonna base that on actual demand, what's happening on the site. They will not take a projection on a new school. You have to open the school, see what's happening, and then warrant it on its own basis, i.e. Killian out on 544, same thing happened there. And a lot of the cities have had to go through the same thing. A little survey of what's going on in our surrounding cities. We asked the question to the cities that you see. Basically, we ask them, hey, do you have some school zones on any state roads? And if they are, are they ninth grade or higher? And there's some other interesting things. But the answers were kind of split. As you see, Carrollton says, no, we do not. Coppell does not. Denton, yes. And it is a ninth grade campus and above. Flower Mountain, yes, but it's obviously not a ninth grade. It's a middle school or lower. Frisco's no, but they had an asterisk by there that basically had a middle school that did not warrant because they did not have any pedestrians crossing the street. And that could change, but it did not make the warrant. So they did not approve that school zone for Frisco. City McKinney indicated that, that they did have a school zone on state, if they, if they had it, they had a school zone on a state road, but double asterisks there, guys, help me out. It was, it was basically, they were inclined to say that they would not recommend establishment of the school zone for that roadway. Did I read that wrong?
No, you're right.
That's correct.
But that was a hypothetical?
It was hypothetical.
If they had one, and in the situation that they had crossing facilities available, they would not make that recommendation for a school zone at that location.
For a high school.
For a high school.
For a high school.
So this is kind of what's going on with our survey cities. It's kind of across the board. A little bit on Harmon. Campus opened in 2011. There was an existing school zone on Duncan Lane, the local street. We did some surveys out there. We noted that students were not only crossing at the signalized intersection, but we did have students crossing at mid-block, which is illegal, but they were doing it. We saw them do it. So we did have that activity going on. It's the Tech Dot Road. Duncan is a local road. So again, we're back to the Tech Dot issue. Right now, 3040 is posted at 50 miles per hour. And that was based on an 85th percentile speed study that we did after, it was expanded to six lanes by Tech Dot. So that's still good information. That's a good speed. That's a good speed, that's a good speed limit based on the numbers. To date, no student-related pedestrian accidents to date at that campus.
And on that, while we're on this, if I remember correctly, Staff and Larry, you were all too, but when that school was, Harmon Campus was initially designed for the school district, it faced Duncan Road.
Correct.
In the school district, it was faced Duncan Road. Somehow, magically processed and designed, all of a sudden, Boom looked at it, and now it faces 3040. That's correct. That's my thought.
Okay. Again, a little background on LHS. We talked about this. From the construction of the two ninth and 10th grade campuses, now LHS is 11 and 12th grade classes only. Students are observed using the crossing 1171, including the mid-block there in front of Albertson's that's signalized, and at Valley Parkway. There's a school zone on Valley Parkway. We talked about that, the local street, but not 1171. There are pedestrian crossing facilities that provided all major intersections with this school, continuous sidewalks on both sides of the streets. We did have one student-related accident. This was outside the crosswalks at 420 on January 15th, 2008. The person basically ran out in the street and did not yield to the, to the traffic. And that's the only data we have of an accident at that site. As far as emergency response from the police department, their general orders, jump in here, Chiefs, if I get this wrong, they prohibit pursuits 30 minutes before and after through the zone. But if they're responding to a call, they will run code, but they're not gonna run as fast as they normally would. Fair enough, Chief?
That's correct.
They're on the school zone speed limit.
And from the fire department, their SOP is they will, they will come up to the zone, and they will, they will drive the posted school zone speed limit. They still have lights and sirens going, but they're not gonna go over that posted school zone. So I can see a little impact here. We talked about the effect on this. So the fire department response on 3040, school zones minimal due to the low number of calls from that area. 1171 could be a little bit more of an issue, because they're coming out of Central, and that's one of the busiest medic and engine stations there are, coming out of Central Station, hitting Main Street. From the PD response, again, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little greater. Again, they are running, they are gonna run code. They just won't run as fast. So it's gonna have some, it's gonna have some effect, but it's really not gonna be much more different than the umpteen dozens of school zones that we have in the city now. This one will just be a little closer, and that's on a state highway, Main Street and 3040. A little history on the elementary schools. School zones are typically set to cover 200 to 500 feet in advance of and past the school property. Again, you have younger students that are involved here. You have groups that typically cross. You do have adult, adult crossing guards that are posted at the local crossings and off-site. You have local signals, signals that have PED buttons, and then you also have crossing guards whether or not. Middle schools, you're upping the age a little bit now. They're typically set, school zones are from the extent of the school campus property. They recognize that the reduced requirement for adult supervision, but there are adult crossing guards placed at local crossings and include local signal-controlled crossings where pedestrian crossing facilities are available. So for middle schools. Again, high schools, I'm gonna go through this very quickly. We've talked about this, LHS, we've talked about, again, provided coverage for the morning and afternoon activities near Valley Parkway since the buses dropped off on the west side. That may have changed. We're gonna take a look at that, since the school has been reoriented. Again, no school zone was, was addressed on 1171. We all know that. No adult crossing guards are present. And again, the reconstruction, we're gonna reevaluate that. Okay, school zone times are generally set 30 minutes prior to school beginning and 15 minutes after, and 15 minutes prior to school dismissed and 30 minutes after. Now Kevin and Staff, about three or four years ago, went back and tried to, tried to unify the times throughout the campuses in the city to make this as standard as possible. Even though some onsite campuses differ in their start times, and some of the school zones actually overlap a bit and are confusing on Fox, but this is the general, the general rule we've operated by for years. Again, the overlapping in the schools, zones, whether it's a middle school or an elementary, sometimes those vary. I think you'll see some consistency here in a minute. I'll backside, jump in here right now. On both sites, for Harmon and LHS, I believe we are, we are in tolerance. Both, both schools start at 8:15 a.m., which means the school zones start at 7:45 and run to 8:30 a.m. Schools out at 3:30, so the school zones fire up at 3:15, and they conclude at 4. Does that sound correct, Mr. Williams?
Sounds great.
So this was within tolerance of that rule that I just showed y'all. And that's for both, both Harmon and LHS. That's current and what's, what's on the books today. So let's talk about some options here. Staff looked at this, tried to use an open mind to see what are all the options. Obviously, let's look at Harmon first. Option A would be to keep doing what we're doing, have the Duncan Lane only and nothing on 3040. We came up with another option B. This gets it here, gets basically, and we didn't draw it, but the Flower Mountain city limit line is, is basically right here on, on Old Orchard. So it would be 300 feet approaching Old Orchard. We would take Flower Mountain's cooperation to get this done. And I think they voiced that they would entertain that. So 300 feet either side of Old Orchard, we would not have a school zone during the breakthrough here, but we would have, there is no signalized crossing or controlled crossing here. We'd have a 300 foot before Valley Parkway and a 300 foot after Valley Parkway. So this would be option B on that proposal.
What's that distance?
The distance here is about 2,900 feet between, or 3,000 feet below or half a mile between Old Orchard and Valley Parkway.
From the difference between those school zones, though, how much distance is it? The end of one to the start of the other?
Well, it would be 2,900 less 600, so...
And how about the other one? 600?
So this would be, this would be 2,000, 2,300 feet in between zone to zone here on the gap.
Okay.
We'll look at this other option in a minute, maybe make more sense. Option C would take the school zone, of course, 300 feet approaching, and it would take it all the way down to the, to the mid-block uncontrolled crossing. Then it would go out, and you'd pick up your 300 either side. And remember, we're using the 300 feet because of the speed limit out here is 50. So they're encouraged, in other words, a slower speed limit would be 200, but this is the 300 foot rule. So we're working with Tech Dot's rule. So this would, this would get you down to the mid-block, which is not protected, but it would have a gap here to here. Option D takes it all the way from Old Orchard all the way through Valley Parkway, 300 feet either side. And again, that's 3,000 plus feet. This is, by the way, the option that the Transportation Board voted for to three to recommend. Let's look at Louisville. We'll come back to these in a minute. Louisville, option A is simply to keep on keeping on, have the, the school zone down on Valley Parkway, but, but we would not have one on Main. Option B is, the only other option we have is to take the 300 foot from Valley Parkway, extend it all the way down to the signalized intersection. There's PED buttons here, and go a little past the 300 foot pass, and that would be your proposed option on Louisville, on 1171.
Where does that end?
It ends right here in front of the Albertson Center, where the signal is there in the main entrance into the parking lot, where the signal is, right there in the Albertson's entry. We'd take it 300 feet past that, so right in front of Chase Bank.
All right.
Okay, sir? We'll come back to these in a second. Okay, Staff recommendation. We're looking at it, taking a step back, saying, do we need to relook at this? I think there's some argument that we probably do. Our recommendation was that you stick, if you did it, we liked the option on Harmon of the 300 feet either side of Old Orchard, free it up, and have the 300 foot either side of Valley Parkway, because of the sheer distance here between the two. And that is not a controlled crossing there in front of the school. Send people to the, to the buttons to cross, and that was our, that was our reasoning for that. On LHS, we'd go with option B, pick up the 300 foot approaching Valley Parkway, and extend it all the way down past the Chase Bank, Albertson's deal, and just go signal to signal there and get that covered. Again, there's PED buttons there. Again, we did a lot of improvements down here, $100,000 with improvements to sidewalks and ramps and PED buttons to make the, to make the traffic, pedestrian traffic get to these intersections more efficiently. So that's part of our reasoning. T-Board, they voted, I believe, four to three. Is that right, guys? Four to three to go from Old Orchard all the way to Valley Parkway on Harmon. And they voted for option B on LHS. And again, council options, you can go back and again, look at these. Let me give you some information before you, give you some direction. But option A is no zone. On Harmon, we go back to the 300 foot on option B. Of course, you have the modified one here down the mid-block and the 300, and you have the whole, whole shebang down here going from Duncan to Valley Parkway. And again, back on high school, you have this. But keep this in mind. What we're trying to do is, if we're gonna do this, we need to have some direction to get back to the July 21st council meeting, so we can have an ordinance in place. We will go on ahead based on tonight and get the order in with the school district's help for buying big things and some equipment, all the markings, and we'll work that out of participation. But get a lot of the stuff ordered. But even if we don't get it in, we can still open the school zone with, with signage and with, with paint markings, and we can get that in before the beginning of the school year. And the beginning of the school year is August 25th. So we can, we can make that date and do it. And we'll also, we'll also look at the LHS as well. So keep that in mind. And that's kind of where we're going. So I'll go back, I'll go back to your council options. We'll stick with Harmon first. So if y'all have some direction on Harmon, I'll entertain questions now.
Do we have to worry about anything with the state overruling us on any of that? Any of those options?
Well, I don't, I think the state would prob, this is out of their book, so I don't think it will have any, much pushback here. You get into these two options, they're probably gonna pushback here, because that's outside of their manual of what they like to say.
Which letter were those?
D and C are probably outside of their recommended book on the, on the manual we were just talking about. So you could run into some problems here, saying, no, we won't approve that because you're outside of the 300 foot. Great.
So what kind of timeframe do they give you when you submit that? Do they give you to whether or not they're gonna approve it?
Jeff, you wanna maybe try, try chime in on that?
We, I mean, we would have to, we've sat down with them, informed them that this is coming. We're gonna have to sit with them again. I think we could get a quick response out of it.
Reason, I say, I wouldn't want to, for example, I wouldn't want to approve D and then we put it up, and then the state come back and say, no, we're not approving. You gotta take it down. That's just gonna be confusing people and cause more problems.
We'd have to lie to the permit first before we did anything.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be put up, taken down. So it's their road. So, yeah, you could get some pushback here and possibly here. I think B is kind of coming right out of their manual. So again, I don't think, we don't have that issue on LHS. I think we could, we could get this due to the signalized crossing, and the distance here is so short, it would be almost ridiculous to slow down, speed up, slow down. So this is a little bit more of an easier transition. I think our concern here is this being here in a half mile, that's an awful long slowdown based upon their, their look at pedestrian traffic or no curves or whatever. They really, again, they, they may seem tough for us to understand, but they're not concerned about the traffic going by the school unless there's curbs, hills, or something else that's gonna be dealing with pedestrians.
Okay, Council, let's take Harmon first. What are your questions or thoughts on Harmon?
No change from my opinion.
No speed zones at all?
No. And I'll say that at every school there, except the elementary. What I would like to look at is that, that schools not be built on state highways.
Thank you.
And on federal highways.
Thank you.
It, it's hilarious to finish. Y'all didn't want it that way. I know. You, it wasn't your, it wasn't your drive, they said it faced 3040. I know.
Surprised.
You were surprised as we were. I understand that. I was just trying to defend you there.
Thank you.
Is there anything that keeps you from going in, approaching the state and find out what their reaction is to the different options that you're, C and D that you're concerned about? Can you present them to the state and say what, what are you, you know, go ahead and tell us, even if it's not necessarily what the council chooses in the end?
We have already presented it to Tech Dot. They haven't responded back yet as to, but yeah, that was what our question, and we were hoping to get their quick responses to how they would react to each of those choices. And we just, we haven't yet received a response.
That's why I'm saying, I think, you know, this one's out of their playbook here.
Yeah.
The other two are kind of out. This one's marginal, but this one's way outside of what they typically would do. So that's, you know, if we were gonna do something, you know, should, should Council want to do something, this was the option we felt that would probably be the fastest and the easiest to get done and have something in place for the pedestrian crossings.
We can only do it up to, if we do anything. We can only do it up to going west. We can only do it up to Garden Ridge. Then the rest of it has to be done by Flower Mountain, correct?
Old Orchard.
You mean Old Orchard.
I'm sorry, up to Old Orchard. I beg pardon.
We talked to Flower Mountain. They verbally just told us that they would probably have no problem doing that. They just put an order.
But that's not...
But their council would have to approve it.
Their council would have to approve it.
Any other comments or questions on it?
If Tech Dot's gonna nix C or D or both of them, then they're off the table. So as soon as we can get that answer, it'd be useful to know for even looking at those options.
My other thought on this, in, I talked to the city manager earlier, and my understanding
is the staff is already, is already looking at this. I would like to see LISD participate equally in the financial cost.
They have, they have, they actually did participate in, on Killian, no, on Summit, and they have leftover money in escrow, maybe in both accounts, that they've done that in the past. So they've indicated they would be willing to participate in cost.
And it should be said that, that I answer to an elected body as well.
Yes.
We'd be very careful to say what they would do. But the school district would card to be a good partner to the city, which are, here goes discussion forward.
And I'm not asking you to pay all of it.
I'll say this, Larry is probably one of our best allies as far as the school district goes in getting anything done. I think Staff will affirm that, that Larry's, in over battery, that made some things happen that haven't happened in the past, and we got some things done that have been great for the city. So we appreciate what you did.
Erica, one other question for you. You do have some streets that come out on the north side of 3040, between Old Orchard and Valley. Is that gonna necessitate additional signage that, so that they're aware if they cut through that neighborhood and familiar with the road, are aware that they're in school zone?
Let's take that in consideration. Again, if we were to use this option, then you're out. We would have, we would have, again, some school warning zones and the speed zone, school zone ahead eastbound and westbound. We'd have to take a look at this intersection to make sure. But again, the flashers and the warning signs would be, you know, ahead of that. So anywhere they turn out, we feel like we'll look at it, but that's gonna, that's gonna be engineered where if they, if they come in through here and come out, they'll be, they'll be notified of that.
And there's no cut-through streets through there really from the access? I mean, do you really try to get out of?
Again, that's kind of normal for you to look at. And I think we can handle it with either way they go to get... way they go to make it meet code and be fair, either eastbound and/or westbound approaching the two zones.
If there's going to be a change, I would be in support of staff's recommendation on the Harmon campus.
You may ask anything?
I'm just, I wanna be clear what the state has to say.
If Tech Dot says no on something, then there's no point in doing it.
Yeah, there's not much room for discussion if they're gonna nix it anyway. At the minimum, I would be option B, and if the state is going to allow it, I would be willing to look at C or D.
Okay. We'll try to force that answer, and we'll relay that back to you all.
And if they allow it, I don't necessarily have a problem with D, simply because if you're gonna have one there, and then, I mean, what are you gonna do? Go slow down to 35, and then speed up for a quarter of a mile to 50, and then slow down again to 35? To me, that's low. But if we were to do that, I think we also need to put up some signs, signage that says jaywalking is strictly prohibited and force a fine up to, but I think we need to force that because instead of want, these are high school kids, they're not junior high, they're high school, and they're very proud to tell you they're part of Louisville High School. They don't need, sometimes they just, I mean, I was a high school kid one time, too. You just don't caution to the wind, but I don't want them crossing there just because it's only 35 miles an hour, I don't want them jaywalking, just jumping across there.
And for the public record, I had that very discussion this afternoon.
Yes, you did.
That is part of my fear of doing it all the way across, that they'll think, well, I can just jump across anywhere now, and that's very hazardous, even at 35 miles an hour.
And the comment I got back from the city manager was to, that we would have to make sure the state approves those signs, but, you know, I would want to say that.
Any other comments? You got what you need? First staff needs to see what the state's approval will be on all three circumstances.
Okay. How about LHS? We got a no right here.
Take care of that one.
I'm okay with option B.
I've seen that get pretty hectic there at that corner, go that corner a lot, and it gets pretty scary. And the problem with that is, is so much that the way that thing is configured and that little island sticks out there.
They're pushing that button on the right turn island, they're out.
They're out the middle street there.
I'm okay with B, I'd like to see what we're doing with Harmon though.
Okay.
Before I give you the package.
But now, they're not, I mean, they're separate items.
I realize.
They're separate items, but it's a policy issue, if you're gonna put one on one, we really need to do both, or we might consist, really, the arguments are really the same in both cases.
They're not both the same level of school, are they?
Ninth and 10th, 11th and 12th.
They're both high school students.
They're different levels, but they're high school students. Some drive, we do have some drivers that go to Harmon in a vehicle, some, of course, 11th and 12th, you know.
It called Louisville High School Harmon Campus?
Yes, sir.
It's Louisville High School Harmon Campus, and they don't want to be differentiated from Louisville High School, period.
You probably, I don't have the council's from it, but you probably have as high or higher pedestrian crossings on Main than you do at Harmon. There's a lot of kids that cross and come and walk to the valley, so there is a lot run on, but there's just a lot of kids that are crossing Main Street, so, you know, I don't think the pedestrian counts are that high on 3040, but there are quite a few kids crossing for whatever reason.
It's in so much more of a populated, a residential populated area.
Eric, I'll make this quick because we're running, we're seriously out of time, but option B, LHS, is this something that also needs to be discussed with the state, or is it by the vote? I don't know that I heard that answer.
I think this one's closer to the vote because the separation between your mid-block crossing and Valley Parkway is negligible, so it's all considered a run-on.
But you, don't you still have to have the rubber stick?
We do.
Okay.
We do. Typically, what they like to see is what are we doing? We could get the maze, we could try to push that through the area, engineer up there to get an answer back on the four options on 3040 and this one, if that would help.
It's fine, I'm hearing mayor's, we won't bring this back to the council until we have the answer from the state.
Correct. Well, there's no sense to get something from the state. Like I say, I don't want to do something and then have the state reject it, we have to take it down. Much more confusing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, well, we're not gonna have time to go through the regular agenda, so we'll just loop everything out front. The only thing I'll ask, does anybody have any need to abstain or want any, from any item, and does anybody want anything pulled from the consent agenda?
No pulls, no abstentions.
I will be abstaining from, I forget the number, the same one, so the third reading, the third and final reading, number 12.
Oh, let's do it. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so that will close the workshop session.
It is seven, little after 7 o'clock, so we'll call the city council meeting to order. First item on the agenda is invocation led by Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and the pledge of both American Texas flags led by myself.
Please rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Texas is a nation. Not yet.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit request for an auto repair shop on 2.156 acres on Light Industrial located at the southwest corner of FM 407 and Summit Avenue, further identified as track 28 of the S-Rig survey, abstract number 1088, as requested by Cross Development on behalf of the property owner. The applicant is interested in building a new auto repair shop at the southwest corner of FM 407 and Summit Avenue. The property has the appropriate underlying zoning, but also requires approval of the special use permit the Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request by a vote of 7-0 at their meeting on June 3rd, 2014. Recommendations that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Do have a card filled out here from Robert Vaughn of Carrollton. He is, does not wish to speak, but is here to answer any questions if council might have any. So any discussion or questions, council? Entertained motion, Council Ferguson.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Having a motion by Council Ferguson, close the public hearing, and second by Council Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council Ferguson.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second. Having a motion to approve the ordinance as presented by Council Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Oh, mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilor, please read it, I'm sorry.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for an auto repair shop located at the southwest corner of FM 407 and Summit Avenue, containing approximately 2.156 acres, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, declaring an emergency.
Thank you, councilor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item two is a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for zone change request from Light Industrial to a state townhouse on 30.071 acres located on the west side of McGee Lane, approximately 140 feet north of Justin Road, FM 407, further identified as tracks 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 29, the F-Pierce survey, abstract 1016, as requested by D.R. Horton on behalf of the property owner. This is a residential infill project identified by staff as a good transitional use to bridge the existing residential with the new single-family detached housing. The developer is requesting ETH zoning for this property and plans to construct a detached single-family subdivision of approximately 140 residential lots. The zoning ordinance for ETH zoning requires a minimum unit size of 2,000 square feet for detached residence, and the developer is proposing to exceed the minimum lot size required by ordinance. The Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of 7-0 at their June 3rd, 2000 meeting. Recommendations that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Do have two cards filled out, one here from a John Holcomb, excuse me, from Frisco, who is not wished to speak but is here to answer any questions that council might have, and the second by Don Allen, who is from Fort Worth, who would like to speak on this item. Mr. Allen, if you could come forward and give your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Address is 6751 North Freeway, Fort Worth, Texas, 76131. We're here tonight to request your approval of this zoning case for, as you said, as an infill property that the staff has identified as appropriate to be a rezoning candidate, a single family. As you stated, even though it's labeled townhouse, these will be detached, fully detached single-family lots. Other than that, I'm here only to answer any questions that you may have, and we respectfully request your approval.
Okay. Council, have any questions? Thank you, sir. Councilman Vaughn, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Vaughn to close the public hearing, and a second by Councilman Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Councilman Vaughn.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above.
Having a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the motion as set forth above caption.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferguson, councilor.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Louisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Louisville, Texas by rezoning the 30.071 acre tract of land approximately located in the northwest quadrant of FM 407 and McGee Lane from Light Industrial District zoning to a state townhouse district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interest and general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, councilor. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item is visitor citizen forum, at this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this time. We do have, how many minutes do we give on these? We have five minutes for these speakers. First card I have is a Richard Wise. Mr. Wise? Do we give your name and address to the record, please, sir?
My name is Richard Wees, I live at 2073 Sienna Trail. My complaint is the code enforcers.
Ma'am, you want to go ahead and give your name and address also?
Oh, I'm Deborah Wees, at 2073 Sienna Trail, Louisville, Texas, 75067.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
We've been having, what, we've been working with Cleve Joyner for about a year and a half, and, you know, he kind of answered all the questions and all that about violations and all that, and we were working really good. Cleaned up my record for, what, 13 months? No violations, no nothing, everything was going good. Then all of a sudden, Cleve had to move over, and Jackie, Jackie who?
Jackie Davis.
Jackie Davis is now in charge of it, and he's going back on a rampage like he did before Cleve was doing this. Cleve was working in between. And Jackie was actually working, oh, not Jackie, yeah, Cleve was like a go-between art, too, you know, because I couldn't get along with Jackie. And it was bad, trust me, with Jackie and what, Don. And I never could get answers from these guys, what's legal, what's not, why are you doing this, why do you do that? They said, we're the code enforcers, we can do anything we want. And. Do not write a ticket. Oh, there was another thing, too, a couple of months back, Cleve told these guys not to write a ticket out. He was down at my house that morning and told them not to write a ticket. Cleve called me back that night and said, I apologize. They went ahead and wrote the ticket anyhow. I'm like, what's going on? You know, don't, doesn't anybody listen to anybody in this town? You know, like I says, Cleve a problem, where am I?
You said that already, we forgot to find out about the rules for the code enforcers.
Yeah, I just, that's another thing, we can't, we never could find out code enforcers laws. What do they have to follow, what don't they follow? Every time I don't get an answer, I might go to this one, I might go to her. I might go to this one, I might go to her, I might go to this one, and I find out what's going on. Nobody wants to answer these questions. They, "Oh, sorry, we can't do nothing. Sorry, sorry. Move on." And it's like, I don't even, you know, I'm walking around here in this, with my hands tied, you know? What?
Told by the judge.
Oh. The last couple of times, we were in front of the judge, my wife and I. The code enforcers now, instead of writing one ticket out, they're writing two tickets out, one for her and me. And I'm saying, "Where's the justification here?" They're getting her for running a business out of the house, which is nothing but paperwork, and they're writing me up a ticket for unsightly conditions. And what I'm trying to find out is, they're writing these tickets up, the last one, I think I got six tickets, and never knew I had them until they came through the mail. So I say, we were sat in front of the judge, not sat, but stood, my wife and I, and we told the judge what was going on. Out of them six tickets, that's the only time I saw the pictures, five of them were in my backyard, where they weren't even supposed to go over the fence. Only one was legit. And I'm saying, "Why aren't we told about these?" The judge says, "They're supposed to. They're not supposed to be giving you tickets," and you find out through the mail. They're actually supposed to let you know, they're supposed to be writing you alone, that you're supposed to be taking care of this. And I ain't getting nothing from these guys.
The two tickets you already said.
Yeah.
Why penalized violations in the past?
Oh, that's another, why am I penalized for past things I've done wrong in this town for the code enforcers? Did you know that... Let's say 13 months ago, my record's been cleaned for 13 months. I got a ticket here just recently. I'm a previous offender. My ticket went from one price all the way up to $2,000 because I kept my record clean for 13 months because I wanted to get some extra money in the house? I'm like, "What is going on here?" So...
Okay, your five minutes is up, so if you go and wrap that up?
That's it?
Yes, if you go and wrap that up.
One other thing I need to really stress here is, one is, I was told they weren't supposed to go past the sidewalk. I got an attorney, and that's what I found out. Two is, what gives them the right to use satellites to take pictures of my house? I feel like, now I'm making a movie of the enemy of the state that's on TV right now. That's just the way it is in this town. I'm like, "What is going on?"
Okay. I'll have somebody from, I'll have the city manager, have somebody from staff contact you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Your turn.
I'm Deborah Wise. Again, I'm Deborah Wise. I'm at 2073 Sienna Trail. We've been there 21, over 21 years. The last two and a half years have been very stressful. We were doing fine prior to Thanksgiving of 2011, and we needed and could afford some foundation repair, and they came out and gave us an appointment for six weeks, for January 2012. At this time, Richard had some shoulder problems. He was, they were very painful. While we were waiting for the foundation, found out he had major rotator cuff injury due to wear and tear from his job. It was not workman's compensation, but my insurance through my work paid for it. The foundation cost $10,000, and the plumbing leak repair was another thousand. Richard's first surgery was in February of 2012, and he was not healing well, so we found out he got an infection from the hospital. He was on daily IVs for six weeks at $40 a day for my copay. In April of 2012, the second surgery to take out the graft and everything he did, they did on that shoulder, and his body basically rejected it. The foundation people have been out twice since this time, by May 31st, to fine tune the repairs. The economy has slowed down, had slowed down, so I was working more hours at my job, reducing times, reducing my time to work on the yard. Also, this last, these last two vacations that we had, we had snowstorms, ice storms the last two, and I wasn't allowed to, I wasn't able to work on the yard. Not only have we had major hospital expenses, but Richard hasn't fully recouped from the surgeries. He has very limited mobility, and he doesn't feel well. He rarely has a day off, and it takes longer for him to do his job. The economy is starting to pick up, and I've been working with Richard on my days off to help him out. We need to keep the company going for two more years until he can collect Social Security. Cleve Joyner has been working with us as a go-between, and he works very well with Richard. He's calm, and he talks to Richard and explains things to him, and then they come up with a plan of action. The town code enforcers say we have to clean up. I was on vacation from Saturday, April 26th to Sunday, May 4th. I spent the entire time cleaning up my yard. I received a ticket for my trouble. I understand the City of Lewisville has a problem with us, but I'm going to get tickets while I'm trying to fix it. I just need some cooperation. We are working very hard and doing the best we can at this time. We're trying to fix the problem. I'm on vacation from Saturday, July 12th to Sunday, July 20th, and I'll be working on the yard again. Thank you.
Ask him why you got to take it and I got to take it, too, at the same time. I missed it with him.
No, you didn't.
No, I didn't. No, I didn't.
In April, when I was on vacation and we were working on the yard, he took pictures, and I was given a ticket. My ticket was dated May 2nd for a home occupation. His was dated May 22nd for unsightly matter. The pictures were the same picture. The tickets were consecutive tickets, but it takes them also five days to get from your, the code enforcers' office to my house. It just needs to be a little bit more...
What she's trying to find is, why we got two tickets at the same time. Hers was $500, mine was $2,000.
Okay, we can't take any action on this item because it wasn't on the agenda.
That's what we're doing right now.
So what we'll do is have, I'll have the city manager have somebody get in contact with you from staff, okay? Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I did not have anyone ask for any items to be pulled. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Durham to approve the consent agenda, a second by Councilman Tierney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the regular hearings. Is consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 9.5-92, paving regarding driveway spacing requirements related to the proposed Moro Cabinet Shop parking lot located at 326 North Keely Avenue as requested by Lee Allison, Allison Engineering Group on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 0.36 acre lot zoned Old Town Mixed Use II within the H.D. Williams Edition located on the southeast quadrant of Keely Avenue and College Street. Moro Cabinet Shop currently owns the vacant property and is in the process of permitting a new parking lot. Staff has reviewed and approved the Old Town Development Plan, subject to the City Council approval of a variance to reduce the minimum driveway spacing required of 50 feet to construct a driveway on North Keely Avenue from the existing driveway. Recommendations that council approve the variance as set forth in the above caption. Do have a card filled out here from Lee Allison, is not wish to speak, however, is here to answer any questions if council might have any questions. Councilman Tierney?
Move to approve.
Second.
Having a motion by Councilman Tierney to approve as presented, a second by Councilman Durham. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is item 11, consideration of two variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section 9.5-92, paving regarding driveway spacing requirements and driveway turning radii related to the bridal boutique located at 125 South Mill Street as requested by Corrine Robertson, Riediger Associates, Inc., on behalf of the owner. The subject site is a 0.329 acre lot zoned Old Town Center Business District within the Baran Edition. Bridal Boutique currently owns the property, is in the process of permitting a new parking lot to support the adjacent business. Staff has reviewed and approved the Old Town Development Plan, subject to the City Council approval of two variances. A, to reduce the minimum driveway spacing requirement of 75 feet between the existing driveways on West Church Street, and B, to reduce the minimum required driveway radius of 20 feet. Recommendation is that council approve the variances as set forth in the above caption. Let's see, have a card filled out by Corrine Robertson, is here in support, but does not wish to speak, but is here to answer any questions that council might have of her. Councilman Ferguson?
Yes. If no one has any questions, move to approve.
Having a motion by Council Ferguson to approve as presented?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is number 12, third and final reading, consideration of ordinance granting a special use permit request for an auto auction facility on 41.059 acres on Light Industrial located at 1836 Midway Road, further identified as Metro Auto Auction Dallas Edition Lot 1R Block A as requested by Buckeye 59, the property owner.
Mayor, I will be abstaining from this as I got a business there.
Okay, sir. At the June 3, 2014, City Council meeting, the council approved the subject ordinance. However, due to the lack of a four-fifth vote by the council to adopt the ordinance on emergency basis, the ordinance has to be read on three separate days to meet the city charter requirements. This will be the third and final reading. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas by granting a special use permit for an auto auction facility located on Lot 1R Block A of the Metro Auto Auction Dallas Edition, containing approximately 41.059 acres, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Counselor. Item 13 is consideration of an ordinance amending Lewisville City Code by amending Chapter 6 Land Development Regulations by defining and allowing the use of a modified site plan, providing for the abandonment of right-of-way by platte under certain circumstances, addressing the use of backflow devices in the interior of a building, and amending pavement thicknesses, amending Chapter 16 Utilities by addressing the use of double-check detector check valves in the interior of a building, providing a repeeler, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency. This proposed change to Lewisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6 Land Development Regulations, Chapter 16, will, A, allow in certain circumstances the required backflow prevention to be located in the interior of a building, and B, allow for modified site plans approved by City Council to have the full effect and force of an engineering site plan. C, allow right-of-way dedicated by a final platte that is still unimproved to be abandoned by a new final platte. And D, require and increase the street pavement thickness from eight inches to 10 inches on principal arterial six-lane divided streets, principal arterial four-lane divided streets, one-way arterial streets, and major traffic carriers. Recommendation is that council approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance.
Second.
Sorry.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve the ordinance as set forth in the above caption?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Ferguson. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 6 Land Development Regulations, by defining and allowing the use of a modified site plan, providing for the abandonment of right-of-way by platte under certain circumstances, addressing the use of backflow devices in the interior of a building, and amending pavement thicknesses, amending Chapter 16 Utilities by addressing the use of double-check detector check valves in the interior of a building, providing a repeeler, providing for severability, providing for a penalty, providing for an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, consideration of an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201, Fee Schedule relating to Solid Waste Collection, Providing a repeeler, Providing for severability, Providing an effective date, and Declaring Emergency. City Council approved a new 10-year franchise agreement for residential and commercial solid waste collection, residential recycling collection, and multifamily recycling collection on March 3, 2014. Based on the franchise agreement, the city adopts both residential and commercial customer rates annually in the fee ordinance. Due to the mid-year rate adjustment normally approved in December of each year, the residential rate effect, rate effective August 4, 2014, will be $11.46 per month for once-a-week collection through December 13, 2015. The commercial rates will vary depending on size of the containers. It will also be effective through December 31 of 2015. Recommendation is that council approve the amendment to the ordinance as set forth in the above caption. Councilman Durham?
Mayor, if there's no questions, I move to approve.
Second.
Having a motion to approve as presented by Councilman Durham, and a second by Councilman Tierney. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-201, Fee Schedule relating to Solid Waste Collection, Providing a repeeler, Providing for severability, Providing an effective date, and Declaring an emergency.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is consideration of an ordinance to change any section of Cowan Avenue by making necessary improvements in restricting all vehicular travel, retaining exclusive dominion, control, and jurisdiction over the street segment as public right-of-way, and providing an effective date as requested by staff. Due to the proposed extension of Valley Ridge Boulevard from Mill Street to College Street, including the new at-grade crossing over DCTA commuter rail, the closure of North Cowan Avenue to vehicular traffic is proposed from Mill Street to just north of the KCS Railroad Overpass. A crossing agreement between the city and DCTA is being negotiated and will require approval by both entities. As a policy, the DCTA requires closure of an existing crossing anytime a new crossing is requested. The existing rail crossing on North Cowan Avenue is very close to the proposed crossing on Valley Ridge Boulevard, so DCTA has specified the closure of the Cowan Avenue rail crossing in exchange for the proposed Valley Ridge crossing. Recommendation is that council approve the request as ordinance as set in the caption above. Do have a presentation by Mr. Eric Ferris?
Okay, Mayor and Council, I'm going to walk you through Valley Ridge Boulevard as it impacts Cowan Avenue. Again, I think we have some members of the community out here in the audience. We have staff members as well, but I'm going to walk you through the basics here. And Valley Ridge, as you can see on your screen, the idea is to connect at Mill Street, come east, cross through Stockard Bottoms, cross Keely, and come and connect down into College Parkway. And the cursor won't work, the little highlight thing won't work, so I'm going to try to make this cursor work, to come down into East College and tie in at the existing Valley Ridge and College intersection at this point, and extend back to the west to where it connects into Mill. Again, this is a significant project. It's been on our thoroughfare and plan since the mid-1980s. This project is funded through Denton County Bond Program and the City of Lewisville 2003 Bond Program. Projected, or the April 2010 was the start of design. Design is complete, and all but two parcels are remaining, which those are basically just about to wind up and be finished. The rail crossing agreement being negotiated between DCTA and Lewisville... The rail crossing agreement being negotiated between DCTA and Lewisville is complete. Again, this started back in '09 when we did a study of the rail through Lewisville, and the Cowan Crossing was identified with Valley Ridge as a potential closure at that time, and that was 2009, and again, that report was given at the council meeting. Again, from DCTA's standpoint, we'll look at this in a minute, their recommendation is that we close the crossing at Cowan due to the fact of the new crossing associated with Valley Ridge and its proximity, the intersection, everything else, and we'll look at that in just a second, a little bit more detail. Again, why close North Cowan? We're going to talk about some things and look at some drawings. The DCTA rail crossing, and Jim Klein is here, so Jim, if I'm saying anything out of turn, where's Jim?
Find you.
Please correct me. Their rail crossing policy, or DCTA runs the rail, but Dart owns the property or the land. But the DCTA's policy is basically for every new crossing that you close, too. In this case, they've sharpened the pencil and said we'll do a one-to-one exchange for Valley Ridge. And again, Valley Ridge is set to go, any delay for the Cowan closure will impact Valley Ridge. We looked at Valley Ridge, and we'll talk about this with Cowan, we looked at Cowan to see is there any viable alternatives to not dead-end Cowan. None of us wanted to do that, but we'll look at that in a minute, and I think we'll have an answer that there isn't any viable options at this point that we've identified, but we'll look at that in a minute. The existing intersection geometry is another consideration we'll look at in a little slide here in a second, in a second. 13 accidents from 2007 through 2013 at the Valley Ridge, Mill, and Cowan intersection. We're going to talk about emergency response to the North Cowan area, we're going to look at some fire department response maps. And again, at this time, we found no viable option to not dead-end Cowan north of the Our proposal is to close Cowan to vehicular traffic, we'll keep the right-of-way in place, we will remove the pavement, including the existing at-grade crossing, we will keep the right for pedestrian crossings, we'll see some pictures and some diagrams in a minute for the pedestrians to go south, turn east, and turn into Valley Ridge. We have a number of utility water and sewer lines through that quarter, those will remain in place, our drainage will remain in place. Side rock access will be greatly improved from a 10-foot walk extending south from the north side of the trestle, coming south through underneath the underpass, turn east and go back into Valley Ridge, we'll see that in a minute. Interesting points on the counts here, we put the traffic counters out, and we had a total of 5,981 vehicles on a typical weekday going each way, but the northbound traffic was 3,696 compared to southbound at 2312. Now, a couple assumptions can be made from that, that a lot of people in the mornings may be going north up to Jones, hit the light at Mill and using that already, and going whichever direction they're going, or in the evenings when people are returning, going northbound from Mill into Cowan isn't as bad an intersection, so, but the numbers are less for southbound traffic coming out. Again, this is a map of the area with the proposed cul-de-sac, what you will see, again, I apologize, I do not have a pointer that will work, so I'll try to use my cursor. Again, I'm on, this is a picture of Valley Ridge as it dead-ends into Mill. You'll see in the green, that is North Cowan as it extends up underneath the trestle and goes in to the areas above that. You will see the green area, that's the proposed pavement to be removed section. The pink or purple is the cul-de-sac that we're proposing to construct at the end of Cowan Street. Now, this will be a cul-de-sac with 100-foot-plus turning diameter, that is this current standard for fire trucks, 18-wheelers, or everything else, there'll be no parking allowed there, so this cul-de-sac would be designed for ample truck, school bus, fire truck turnarounds that would meet current standard. You'll notice in the yellow, you'll see the, of course, to the east is the Valley Ridge extension, maybe this won't move that picture if I do this right.
Mr. Ferris, can I just hold you there for a second?
Yes, sir.
Where you're saying there's no parking there in that cul-de-sac, will there be signs there stipulating that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is going to move that picture, but what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to show you is the yellow, if you'll come from the pink bulb coming south, there'll be a 10-foot walk that will continue south on the east side of Cowan, it'll go underneath the trestle, then it'll make a hard left, you'll see the little yellow line, it says proposed four-foot sidewalk, we're going to make that a 10-foot sidewalk that will come down in and tie into Valley Ridge. Pedestrians can use that, they can come up Valley Ridge, use the PED buttons to cross over Mill Street should they be going to a school or wherever they're walking, so pedestrian traffic will be slightly altered but basically would be still in place. Now, an interesting thing about this alignment is you can look at the distance between crossing to crossing. If you see the first increment there, it's 310 feet from the railroad crossing at Cowan to the, from track to track, or from crossing to crossing to the future new crossing at Valley Ridge. Now, I think Mr. Klein will tell you that's relatively very close and too close for two crossings to be, especially in a new condition which this would be. They'd like to see those crossings much further apart. Another interesting thing is control of access, it's hard to see, but you can look down at Cowan between the toe of the intersection of where Cowan comes into Mill, and the new radius or the new right-of-way line for Valley Ridge is only 120 feet. So, we have a lot going on between those two things, so those two things alone without the, just by themselves are not a good thing for safety and for traffic maneuvering and for people trying to figure out what, what to do in an intersection. We'll come back to this a couple of times, but this is basically the drawing of the close-up of what we're proposing to do with the, with the, with the closing. Some pictures here, we're looking, this picture is looking northbound from Mill Street up northbound Cowan, you can see the raised eight-inch medians there that we did for the quiet zone, again, that was talked about in 2009, that was put in place, you can see the trestle looking north up Cowan. This is actually in the right-turn lane, going to westbound Valley Ridge, looking north, back toward Cowan, and up toward North Mill. And again, in the mornings, you'll see a lot of people come out of Cowan, cross both lanes, cross into the right-turn lane to go westbound on Valley Ridge. Some people make it, some people don't. This was taken midday where the stack's not there, it's very common in the morning, you'll see the stop bar there on the right side, that there might be five, six cars in both lanes even further if they're school bus, and all, all people can do on north, on southbound Cowan is wait until someone lets them out, whether they take one lane, two lanes, or three, we've seen it all, but again, that's a picture looking northbound from that, that location. Again, this picture is looking southbound, kind of opposite, coming in from where Cowan intersects Valley Ridge. This picture is again, southbound, looking back toward Mill, you can see the ride-only now, if you're southbound Cowan coming out, you can do a ride-only and go north on Mill, otherwise you have to go across and get in where the red pickup and where the little blue SUV is parked, and again, the queue and the intersection depth there, if there's more than four or five cars, you're not coming out southbound unless somebody gets you out or lets you out. This is southbound, looking back toward Mill from the trestle. Again, another southbound look, and there's the existing sidewalk, and this needs to be mowed, by the way, by the railroad, but this is an existing sidewalk that would be widened, proposed to 10 feet, and we'll talk about that some more in a little bit. Again, this is kind of a neat picture, this is southbound, looking of Cowan, and you can actually look and see the existing Cowan up the hill, there's a building there, you can see the two-tone, but this is southbound looking at the trestle, and the road does not continue, that's the side of a building down there with the little stripe on it, but kind of an interesting picture. Northbound, looking Cowan from basically the cul-de-sac, you can see some businesses to the right, I believe that's Mr. Heggards, some of his properties there. This is the Boulevard entrance to Village North Mobile Home Park, there are double-stripe fire lanes on either side, you can see the office, 300 to 400 feet back there to the east, and cars coming out, we'll talk a little bit more about this, some concerns came up during the citizens' meetings about what's going on with this. Okay, proposed North Cowan access, what we're trying to show in this drawing is basically once the street closes, we'll talk about the timeframes in a minute, that people would come up northbound Mill Street, go east on Jones, and then turn south on Cowan, they could also come up Keighley to Jones, and then turn south into Cowan, so you see the little, the yellow arrows there, we're trying to illustrate the alternate route. Okay, staff, we're going to recommend the closure at this time on North Cowan due to necessity, trying to get the Valley Ridge in and the need for the crossing there, and the fact that the intersection is, has some geometric issues and has for years, but seems to be getting worse through time. This item we have on the 7th is, there's acquisition or some purchase of right-of-way for the cul-de-sac that's on this agenda. Closure, again, this is important, the closure will not occur until 12 to 18 months after, after Valley Ridge construction begins, and the reason for that is they're going to start the road and whatnot, they won't shut down the actual Cowan connection for approximately 18 months into the project, so there is some time here to work out a lot more details. We're going to bid Valley Ridge late this summer of 2014, we're anticipating to start construction fall of 2014, completing construction fall of 2016. We're going to recommend highly improvements to North Keighley and Jones Street in the future bond program to widen and make concrete wider streets out of, out of both of those streets. Something that is a change here, we are going to resurface and reshake Morningside and Crescent and Cowan, that would, that's actually a mistake there, we've ramped that up in the 14, 15 budget year, finishing Morningside and Crescent summer of 15. Is that correct, Mr. Backus? Okay. So, take note of that, and again, why is that important, I'll show you in a little bit, that's actually the grid streets to get back, they need to be done anyway, and they were already programmed, but we're, we're amping that up and increasing that timeframe, and we'll show how those grid back up and are important for secondary access in a minute. We're going to continue to evaluate emergency response and evacuation, evacuation routes, we're going to show some of that in a minute, and again, police and fire always adjust as things are built, namely Valley Ridge, and when you get big thoroughfares like that, they always look at those, and they're constantly responding to improvements on how they respond from their various locations. We'll look at some maps in a minute and come back to that. We're going to continue to work with LISD and the post office regarding delivery of service, we've been working with Larry Williams with the district, Durham Bus, we'll talk about that in a minute, the post office as well. Concerns and questions that came up at our public meetings held on June 26 and July 2nd, we had great participation, Mr. David Solomon, I think, hosted the meeting on June 26th, Assistant City Engineer hosted the meeting July 2nd, Jeff Kelly, and we had a lot of great comments, we had good, good turnouts on both meetings, we had over 75 people at the last meeting, July 2nd, which was held out at Jones, and they came up with a lot of good questions, a lot of good concerns, and we're going to try to share some of those with y'all tonight. The number one was, hey, why are you doing this, why, is there not an option not to dead-end Cowan? Good question. So, when we looked at this originally, we looked to try to take Cowan, and again, I can't move this cursor, it's going to move that picture, we tried to take Cowan, come through the trestle, come south and make a hard left at the toe of the other railroad embankment, MKT, or the Santa Fe, and we were going to hug that toe and come east and then turn it back into Valley Ridge. The problem is, even with the reduced right-of-way, with the reduced speed, with a reduced roadway, everything else, we get into, this is hard to see, but we get into DCTA's right-of-way and nearly to the track, you can see the two little arrows there, the road dimension with that radius and everything else, it's just not, it can't be done. We can't cheat north because we get into the embankment that holds the rail up, and we can't do that, it's not, that's a safety issue, you can't cut into the embankment that holds the, the trestle up, we can't come south, we can't come east, so, but we did look at it and look at this design, and it just was not, we tried, we squeezed, and it just won't work. There was another question that came back up about a western turn, can you come down Cowan, make a west turn at the cul-de-sac and go that way, and, you know, on the surface that sounded good, but if you look, hey, that involves a new crossing, so, we're back to the same problem, a new crossing, so that won't work as well. So, at this point, we have no viable options for traffic other than putting in the cul-de-sac and dead-ending Cowan. We're still looking, but we haven't found anything else. Emergency response, let's talk about that. Currently, and chiefs, please speak up in your mics if I get something wrong here, the current, I'm going to talk about current fire department response, your colors there are from, basically from yellow is Station 2, the purple or dark pink is from Central, and the red is from Station 4. And the average response times currently to, and these are measured to the area and/or the entrance to Village North Mobile Home Park, from fire department average response now from Station 2 is the fastest at six and a half, 6.3 to 6.5 minutes to get to the entrance to that. Station 1 or Central Station is, is seven, is seven, 7.3, 7 minutes and 30 seconds, and then Station 4 is out, is well out there at 12-plus minutes, probably due to 407 and the number of crossings and what they have to deal with to get there. Police response to the area, I believe, is, chief, Kerbo, what's your average response time to Village North?
Yeah, the average response time to Village North is typically about a minute and a half to two minutes longer than the citywide average, but that's not unlike similar scenarios we have already existing around the city. I purposely looked at a couple of mobile home parks that have basically the same one-way in, one-way out, and they're hitting about that same mark, so, we don't really think that we'll see a significant difference here. We don't really track which direction our guys respond from, if they are responding from the north, that Jones route is the primary route you would take anyway, it's only those responding from the south that would be affected by this closure, and they'll just simply make up the difference to do that. You know, in our minds, it's a lot better for fire apparatus and EMS to get there quicker than we do anyway.
Okay, this is the current fire response map, and again, police, since they're roaming, you know, it's hard to say where they're responding from. We tried to do a future fire response map, and basically you take those times and add a minute to two minutes to them, and you can see the routes, and again, these may change, you know, Station 2 is still going to come up Church to Mill Street and go all the way to Jones, and take an east on Jones, and then back down into Cowan. Central is coming the same way, and 4 is the same way. Now, when Valley Ridge gets built, if it's easier, if we find some time savings to hop over on Valley Ridge somehow and come that way, that'll be, that'll be evaluated by the chiefs at the time, they'll also take a look at coming up straight and do some studies on straight-up summit. However, you have three train crossings on summit, you have a number of stop signs, a number of intersections to get there, so, it's another alternate route, but at this point, this is the response that the fire department would use to get there, and you would add a minute and a half to two minutes, depending on where they're coming from or whatnot. If they're coming from the training ground, it's going to be quicker because they can come up Valley Ridge and get there, but it just depends on where, where they are and what's needed at the time. Okay, I'm going to go back. Emergency evacuation was brought up by a lot of the citizens, it was a good thought. We had talked about it, and we probably did not present this very well the other night, we were, we were dealing with outside and whatnot, but what we've come up, what we're looking at is several things, we were asking about, well, what about a northern route? Is there a way, if we needed to evacuate from south to north, how would that happen with a dead-end road? Bear with me, I'm going to go over to a little, all right, this is kind of a zoomed-in version or a closer look of Mill Street, Cowan, and Jones, and up here, nope, it's not going to let me do it, you can see Morningside in the center of the drawing and Crescent. Basically, those, from, from Morningside down to the cul-de-sac meets City Code, it's, it's in the allowed distance of a dead-end street, so basically, if something happened down in that sector, you could grid back, and say if something happened mid-block of Cowan, they could grid back through Morningside or Crescent and get back up to Jones and go either way, or if something happened at Morningside or Crescent in those streets, you could use Cowan and go back. So, it's a gridded, it's a gridded system to the southern port of Morningside and Cowan, so that would be your grid going northbound. I'll just stay here, go over the other points, I may not go in order, but there was a thought saying, well, gee whiz, is there a possibility to get something east or north out of Village North Mobile Home Park? We took a look at it, and we have city property along the north side, but we, what we think would be the easier, because of the plant expansion, the issues with the plant with chlorine and some of the dangers up there, what we thought would be better would be to take a mid-block look at, I'm going to try to do this, maybe it won't move this drawing, where's my cursor? Where's my cursor? Here we go. Right down in this area, can y'all see where I'm moving that? There are no homes on the east side of the property of Village North. Just to the east of there is a fire lane in between, I believe those buildings, I believe that's 1491 North Keely. I think they're owned by a single owner. There's a fire lane in between those two buildings. So we could put two box coverts in the drainage ditch, tie right into the roadway, which is very wide there, of Village North Mobile Home Park, gate it, just like the secondary accesses are to other multifamily places that are only used in an emergency, but you could, that's a possible gate there where you could send people east out of the area via fire lanes and via that network and get that, and that fire lane goes straight out to Keely. So that's an eastern possibility that we've looking, that we're looking at. Coming down south, if something happened up north, up here at Jones, let's say at the plant or at Leatherwood or this train issue up north, what we were talking about doing is using that pedestrian walkway that we looked at and widen it to 10 feet plus, maybe adding thickness, maybe go instead, go to eight-inch concrete all the way down. And that way, you could put vehicles and light pickups and reasonable vehicles on that at slow speed and creep them through there using the trail. And again, it'd be for only emergencies only, when there's an evacuation in process. Jim's going to shut down the trains anyway during an evacuation, so the trains won't be running. But we could come south via east, as you saw on the pedestrian, come up to Valley Ridge and get people out that way in the event of a catastrophic evacuation. But it's an idea we could do. We've got the trail there anyway, make it 10-foot wide, beef it up, and that could, we could make that happen. So we're looking at that as a possibility. And again, all these came up at the meeting, there were very good comments made by the Another one, this was a very popular one, was, you know, hey, we got the school bus stopping out on Cowan. We're unloading and loading. It's got kids out there. Parents are queuing up in the parkway there, all the way up in the fire lanes on Village North Mobile Home Park. The world stops when the school bus is out there, and it probably does. So we need to look at that. So what we were talking about with them, with LISD and with Village North, met with their manager, and we're going to get the school bus off of Cowan. They're going to pull onsite, you need to circle through, which we think they can do it, they're looking at it, or at a minimum, go down the boulevard, pull in front of the office, which is, you know, 350, 400 feet off of Cowan, do all their loading and unloading there, and get off of Cowan. Take that out of the picture. And I think the parents would like it. It's safer, the kids aren't queuing up in the street. I think that's a can-do thing. And our other issue that was, gee whiz, you're blocking me off. I've had customers coming for years. How are they going to find us? And again, I think that's a very good comment. And what we would do would be, again, to look at some signage by utilizing some, you have Morningside Street, you have Crescent, and you have North Cowan up in that area. So what we would do is probably use street signs and wayfind and trailblaze via west and east Valley Ridge, Mill Street, and just put arrows to Morningside Drive to Crescent and cat-track all the way up to Jones and get them to Cowan, get them to those areas. We can use our own city signs to do that. As opposed to the businesses, which, to our count, there's 40-plus businesses in this area that either front Crescent, Morningside, or Cowan. And you'll hear from some of them, a lot of them have multi-tenants that have been there a long time. Mr. Heggard's property and some of the others have been there 30, 40-plus years. You know, their question is, how am I going to get my customers there? And I think that's a good question. So what we were going to do is utilize the city's kiosk signs, and this is just an example. This is certainly not it, but which they can have eight panels or jumbo panels. You see the Buffet Palace as an example. That's a jumbo to where we might could put, if you had, let's say if it was Ferris Industrial Park, you could have that there and have all the suites or possibly the names of the businesses on the jumbo panel. Each of these has eight panels, and we could trailblaze utilizing the kiosks the same way. We could come up Mill Street, we could use east and west Valley Ridge, and we can trailblaze on the Jones to get those folks down to those businesses so they'll know how to get there. And they can even drop down south on Mill Street going northbound of Valley Ridge and start those. We met with Baker Clearwater Signs, met with a gentleman, and talked about that, and he's suggesting group them in threes. You're talking maybe up to a dozen signs with eight panels each. We're not sure exactly who, how, and how it gets done, but it's a good, it's a good alternative to get some wayfinding if council wanted to do that, to get these people to the businesses and locations of where they need to go. And I believe that concludes my presentation. I'll entertain questions.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions, Mr. Ferris at this time?
I do. You had mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that there was, I think you said 13 accidents at that intersection?
Yes, sir.
How does that compare to an average intersection in the city?
The question was, with our 13 accidents from 2007 through 2013, how does that equate to other intersections in town of its type of intersection? Is it high, low, or is it?
It is about the same. It's a little low, I guess.
Kevin, or can I add to that question relative to the traffic counts on that street? In other words, how busy is that street? Because a busy street's going to potentially have more accidents.
Again, Mill Street's pretty busy, and again, 5,000 cars are moving through the North Cowan intersection north of Mill a day.
Yeah, I would say that that is actually a lower-use, lesser-volume roadway than your typical streets throughout.
Than it would be compared to Main Street or 121 or some of those other thoroughfares?
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, the staff at this time? Okay, thank you, sir. We may have some more questions here in a minute, maybe to get you to answer. I do have several cards here of people that would like to speak. Start with Dwight Leatherwood. Hi, Mr. Leatherwood, if you would, just give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Dwight Leatherwood, 621 Robin Lane, Argyle, Texas. I have a business on Crescent Avenue and have had for about 34 years. This is my wife Linda. I'm ready to vote for this, you know. Hell, you got me convinced. We didn't have enough time to make a presentation like this. We got our notification that you were going to close Cowan Avenue. I did on the 20th of Jim. We had two meetings with the city engineers and a holiday weekend in there and weren't allowed to put up any signage or anything to get people out to vote on whether we wanted to try and stop this. You're going to decrease the resale value of our businesses in that area by cutting off one access. I keep pointing up there because I'm looking for his presentation. By cutting off vehicle traffic to these businesses that require vehicle traffic for their business. You're going to impact my business because of the difficulty of freight lines getting in and out of my business. And I think you're going to decrease the value. I've already been told by a real estate agent that that's going to have a heavy impact on the resale value of our property. I'm getting to a point in my life where I'm ready to sell. If I had done it quicker, I'd appreciate it, but I didn't. So I don't need the value to go down, it needs to go the other way. We've been good citizens of Louisville, all of us up there, for all these years, and I just don't think this is fair. I think it's going to provide, present a traffic problem by confining all the access to that area, just to Jones Street. You either go east on Jones or you go west on Jones, and you can only go out Keely or Mill. I sat at that intersection at Mill Street and Jones at 2:00 or 3:00 in the afternoon for 20 minutes, waiting for a train to get by, and there's probably 50 cars backed up behind me waiting for that. It's, I think, I think restricting that neighborhood to just that one access is a mistake. If there's an emergency in there, I know these gentlemen can respond quickly before the neighborhood has to be evacuated or something major happens. How are you going to get them all out there on one-access road each direction? And again, not to mention these gentlemen that have businesses on Cowan itself and they depend on vehicle traffic. That's going to be cut off. I haven't, I'm not an engineer, and I'm not a city engineer for sure, but there's got to be another alternative that hasn't been looked into for access. If you're going to close that road, make access on the east side of the trailer court some way back down to the new Valley Ridge road that you're putting in. I just think we need more time, we as residents and city need more time to look into the things. I know they think they've spent a lot of time on it and they've got this plan all worked out. But I'd like to ask you to table this until we can all have more time to think more clearly about what this is going to impact that neighborhood and ways to avoid that. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. I do appreciate you coming out. Thank you, sir. Next is C.L. Heggard. Mr. Heggard, if you'd just give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes. I am Charles L. Heggard, and I'm getting kind of old, too. But the, I live in Lake Kewa, up east of Gainesville, because traffic got so bad and the wife kind of wanted to try to get out of some of it. But I'm ready to, just about to move back to Louisville. I've lived here for over 40 years, I think since 1967 I came back here. Well, and I've spent a lot of money. Those trailer park down there is, that's a heavy traffic area, and you don't realize it. I asked the engineer the other day, but how much did that counter report in a day? And he said 6,000. So he didn't tell me whether it was up a little or down a little or what. But it's hard to do, and when you only have one way out, especially, you know, underneath Cowan is big water mains, there are gas lines, and there are sewer lines. Well, if they ever had to dig that up, see, there's about 200, 300 feet from my property out there. We go under Cowan Investments. And by the way, do you want my phone number? Forgot to give it to you.
No, you don't have to give that. I advise you not to give that out, probably.
But anyway, this is kind of a serious situation. We've been there for many years. I bought this first from Brown Organization in 1957. And I bid, they built three more big treetop buildings, and you have to look, and you can tell everybody that drove by, it's a pretty neat place and it's all concreted. It's a super place to have a shop. Of course, they're small businesses. I have 91 spaces that I rent. No, I don't have 90. I keep one for me to maintain the place.
Right.
But in other words, if they had to dig up that street, though, I don't know what we would do. There's about 200, 300 feet that, there's no way to get to Morningside or anywhere. I used to own a whole house on Morningside. I bought it for my kids. But anyway, they've moved since. But, you know, it's a very touchy situation there, and we need to have more. And I was mentioning it to your man the other day about they should maybe get those buses to come around straight down Jones. And you've got a road that runs the city, Louisville, I mean, yeah, Louisville here, does have a road almost right down to the trailer park. And they have enough room to make a bigger turnaround. And, you know, it's never provided any shelter for kids to catch those buses. But they could put a little down there at least. And then when the mornings, the mothers bring them out there, and the buses are detained a little bit, you know, and sometimes it's 30, 45 minutes or more, they block that street and they have their signs out, stop, do not pass. Well, there are a lot of problems here that you don't know it unless you actually have property there. And this, doing this would really lower the value of our property. When you have a one-way in and out, nobody wants that. And I think they, there's better ways of doing this. And like he says, we didn't have any time. I got a letter, the 20th, and I was in bed sick. And I got up and I tried to look around and do what I could in about two or three days, which wasn't much, because I couldn't catch anybody home. I've called everybody that's on the city council here, no phone numbers. They have a home phone, but they don't return your call. I mean, I'd like to find out a little more about this, but we need a little more time. And if you could extend it for two or three months, you're not going to be in a big hurry anyway. So give us time to find out the information if it's really legal for you to close something that had been commercial and letting industrial from, gosh, I don't know when. And that's why we moved in there, we put some nice buildings and different things. And now you're going to close the door. This is not the American way at all. We're supposed to have liberty, you know, and freedom to speech and everything else, but nobody wants to talk to us that's in command here. It's kind of aggravating, sir, I know. But anyway, it's well, it's really going to be, when all of these, see, at work time, school bus time, all of this, and you get buses and people trying to get out and running around wherever street they can get to, and then you can't get on Jones if you go down Morningside or you can't, it's a problem, and I know. But nobody seems to recognize this. And I asked the people the other day, the engineer, I said, look, you've drawn all this up, but now if you had to dig up one of those big mains in there, if it was down closer to where we are or that trailer park drive, we couldn't even go in and out. Now, that's kind of putting you in a critical state.
Right. Your five minutes is up, sir. If you could kind of wrap it up, we'd appreciate it. And I'm not saying we'll do anything since we get, I give everybody a chance to speak.
Well, they cover a lot of it, but they didn't go into the details like we face every day.
Okay, sir.
And I would sure appreciate for a little more time and let's think about this a little bit more, because it hurts a lot of people.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Brad Hill.
If you would, just give your name and address, please, sir. Sure. My name is Brad Hill. I live at 324 Texoma Drive in Hickory Creek. And I have a business at 1415 Crescent Avenue. We've been there for 35 years. And most of our access, all of our access to our freight docks are accessed through Cowan Street. And I have one dock that faces Cowan, and small trucks come, deliver and pick up from that location. Our large 18-wheelers come in from Cowan, and they have to jockey in a position even on Cowan to get into our dock. It's, and it takes a little bit of time to do that. I think that, you know, that's, and that it's just three a day, that doesn't sound like a big deal. But if those trucks have to wait, it can affect my business. And then if, you know, I know emergency response has got it worked out pretty well, that, that's okay. But I mean, it's basically, my point is the overall congestion on Cowan, irregardless of, you know, the school buses being, stopping in the mobile home location, that's great. Emergency vehicles, it sounds like it's not going to be that big a deal. But the amount of congestion that comes in, the traffic through Cowan that we depend on for our business is huge to us. And this gentleman over here brought up, you know, he, it's a very objective opinion, and I can appreciate that. I can also appreciate that the, that it looks like the city planners have tried to make an effort to access Cowan. But I think by not accessing Cowan or cutting that access off to Mill Street is just, is not acceptable to business owners. We've been there, we're good for the community, we've been there 35 years. We hire local residents. I try to hire high school students, try to hire college students so that they can get some real-world, you know, business experience. And I think that this just leaves, it's just, I think it's unfair to us business owners. That's our largest asset, as Dwight mentioned. And, you know, we're... And, you know, we're, my, my future depends on the resale of that business and the function of that business. I think Cowan negatively impacts my day-to-day business flow, and it, and it absolutely will impact my resale value, without a doubt. I think it's, it's unfair for a company that's been good for the community to, to do this. I think there's got to be some, some other option than to let, you know, DCTA or whatever, the, uh, strong-arm, strong-arm this closure of Cowan. And I understand it from their point of view. But for, unless you're a business owner that has everything invested in this, you won't see it like we do. It's just a different scenario. I think we have to really consider this and, and try to find out some, some way of not closing fifty percent of our, of our business flow. Keely is not an option. Nobody's ever come to my business via Keely from, you know, Old Town or from one-twenty-one. And that's all I ask, is that we just, we try really diligently to, to not close it. I just, I just, I don't think it's fair. I think there's got to be a solution around that. So I, I just, I just protest the closing based on fairness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Thank you, sir. Mr. Tom Arledge?
Gentlemen, my name's Tom Arledge. I live in Denton at thirty-nine-thirty-nine Teasley Lane. But I've rented at twelve-thirty from Charlie since before he bought that property. And I'm just curious, I've asked these questions at the two other community meetings, and I didn't get an answer. Has anybody done any studies on what this is gonna do to the tax base up there and how much money the city of Lewisville's gonna lose? Because it's gonna impact them, it's gonna impact resale. Now, I'm a renter, okay? I'm not, but I would like to know that, 'cause I would like to have a reduction in my rent. So has anybody looked to see what this is really gonna cost those businesses? I mean, dollar-wise, either in property values or in, uh, you know, their actual retail business, you know, as customers come in and out? And I don't think anybody's looked at it.
I have this, I have the city manager address out here in just a minute for you, okay?
Okay. Because, you know, I said, I, I'd like to have a rent reduction, but I think it's gonna really clobber that particular little commercial section up there. And I've been there for a long time, and it's pretty viable. Don't know about the, the, uh, the residential part of it. I mean, there's some houses back up in there, but that's not really big residential. You know, it's gonna be commercial forever. And has anybody ever looked at that? I mean, I'd like to see some numbers.
Okay.
And I've asked at the other two, and of course, the engineering guys didn't know. I mean, that's not their job, but I still had to ask the question. So this is the third time I've asked it.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, sir. And did you wanna address that now, city manager, or would you like to look at that at a future base or what?
I would like an opportunity to look further into that, mayor.
Okay. So we'll have a look back at it, and I will have somebody from the city get back to you on that question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sir, it is a fair question. Thank you, sir. Jennifer Cruz.
You can pull that down, please, a little bit.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cruz, and I live at twelve-forty North Cowan. I actually live in Trail Parks. I've been there about sixteen years already, most of my life. And so over time, I have seen how the school, the school buses, they get full. And right now, because of the, the buses, oh, and bear with me, I'm not good at speeches. Um, because of the school buses getting full, there's been three, three, adding up school buses, three buses, let's say that. I know Central, um, Central Mentory has already three buses full of kids. And if, it might be safe, yes, it is safe if they actually, um, pick up the kids in front of the, um, bus, I mean, I'm sorry, in bus, in front of the, um, office. But thing is that that's gonna get more buses to be in there. And then not only we have kids that go to the schools, we also have workers. And we have a lot of Hispanic people that have kids. And so that's gonna just have delays. And for me and my parents, that's not good. I just graduated, and I'm looking for a job in the mornings. And so closing that road literally would give me too ma, too many delays, pretty much. And so I just really honestly don't think that it's good for us if you close that, that road. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. Councilman Durham?
Well, I wanna be in favor of the closing. It is in the interest of safety to get it done. It's not gonna be pleasant. I don't think in the long run, this is gonna have any effect on the businesses. Can't back that up with any numbers today. And Mr. Haygood mentioned that nobody called you back from the council. I did talk to you.
You were the only one.
Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure that there was a call back from the council for anybody that got called. So that's all I have, mayor.
Councilman Tierney?
It's a tricky, tricky situation, obviously. My biggest concern is the, obviously, the one, one-way in, one-way out. And that is gonna create huge congestion. Public safety, of course, I think we've got that handled pretty well. Eric, I like a couple of your proposals for the, in the event of emergency, as far as evacuation, that's obviously, um, a big concern. So I don't think we're in that big of a hurry to get this done tonight. I'm okay with tabling it for now and see if there's absolutely any other options, any, anything else that we can do. Thank you.
Councilman Farrington?
Where to start? This is not gonna be the first neighborhood with a one-way in, one-way out, so that's not something new. It could've been this way all from the very beginning. It's a very, um, it's a very bad intersection with the way it's arranged now. I am completely satisfied that the city has looked at every conceivable option. And it is a bit like a pinball machine. There's really just one way out of, uh, one-way solution to this. There's not other options. We could beat this to death, we'll come back to where we are now at the end of the day, because it's already been beat to death. I'm not concerned about the property values. If anything, that'll be more than offset by the opening of Valley Ridge and what that will do for other property values. So that's, that's, doesn't even carry any weight. If anything, it'll raise overall tax base to do this. I'm satisfied to move forward on it tonight. I don't know that there's anything gained by tabling it. That's where I'm at.
Councilman Vaughn?
Well, mayor, after hearing the concerns and the presentation to the council tonight, I basically feel that there are some positives and there are some negatives to be gained by this closure. But I don't really feel satisfied that nothing else can be done. And for the, my satisfaction, the satisfaction of the council, and the concerned citizens, I would not be opposed to tabling this matter and taking no action on it at this time.
I'll just state that I do appreciate all of your time and coming out tonight, and appreciate you attending the meetings also. I know when, when staff first brought us to, my concern was the, uh, the amount of time that would be given to the people down there about the closing, the shortness of the time that was given to the people about the closing and help make sure everybody understands it. And I did ask staff to make sure that everyone would be informed of the meeting, so they did make sure we had two meetings where everyone was informed. I still understand your concerns about not really giving you enough time to look through it and stuff. I do feel staff has probably done the best they, they can, and I think they've probably done a great job at looking through it. However, as, as, uh, Mr. Ferris said tonight, he understands there are some concerns, and the residents and the, and the business owners raised some good questions at the meetings and made, had, and because of the questions, staff looked at some alternative things to do as far as evacuating and the school buses and things like that in there. I, I guess my question to staff would be, city manager, as to what effect does it if we don't pass it tonight and, and look at some alternatives or some additional things that could be done to try to help, uh, convey the issues to the citizens?
The closure doesn't actually take place for eighteen months. However, if you choose to delay, the next item on your agenda deals with the purchase of property related to the closure. So you would need to make a decision about whether you would move forward with that item or not. So again, you, you could delay, but in the long run, staff can continue to try to work with the businesses and the residents of this area to find the best solutions possible. But the, the bottom line is either you want Valley Ridge to punch through, which is a very important east-west connection, or you leave Cowan open. And we truly have searched for all alternatives. Believe me, we understand the negative impact on the businesses and residents, and we want to do everything we can to minimize that impact. But I do not believe that leaving Cowan open is possible. So a delay, we can help look for additional ways to soften some of the impacts, but I don't see that it will achieve many other items. Certainly, it, it doesn't correct the, the problem, the basic problem is the closure that's required.
Right. And that's why I was wondering, I understand the pardon about the closure. I think what seems to be a problem is, is, is getting everyone else to understand all the staff has gone through to do that in a two-week time. Basically, at two weeks, or less than two weeks, we can take the holiday in there, two weeks' time for the residents to understand what all we've gone through, what we've done to, that type of stuff. So, and I understand the saying that it really won't affect the project by more than a couple weeks or a month if you delay it to try to get them some more meetings, some more understanding, some more information, so that they can help digest it and help understand it.
We're very willing to do that, mayor. It would be a slight delay to the project, but we're very willing to do that.
Okay.
So just for, just for clarification, at this point, with everything that has been scrutinized and everything that's been looked through, it is an either-or.
It is an either-
Either Valley goes, Valley Ridge goes through, or it doesn't, and Cowan stays open.
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to table.
Second.
We have a motion to table to what date?
A month. Next meeting? Two more weeks?
Good more time.
What about a month? What about a month? Give staff adequate time to revisit-
Fair enough.
-with the tenants, the residents, and those people there, to help them communicate more. I'm seeing some nods from staff over there. Is that not enough time, or is that enough time? Yeah. Is that enough time to help staff get some more presentations to the residents and stuff of that area? And when I'm saying residents, I'm not just saying homeowners, I'm saying also the business residents that are, they're also, we consider you as residents also.
That should be ample time, mayor.
Okay. So is that your motion, the first, first meeting in August?
Yeah, motion first, first meeting in August.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney, and a second by Councilman Durham, it already is a second.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So I hope everyone understands what we're doing. We're not saying we're not gonna close it. We're not saying that this doesn't need to happen. What we're saying is we're gonna table this for another month, and we're gonna make sure the staff gets with you, has another meeting or two, and lets you try to fully, more fully understand exactly how it'll be and get you some answer to some of your questions, to exactly, show you exactly the studies they have done, why they can't do this or that, and why there's not this, this alternative that you think there might be, why it doesn't exist. I would encourage you to continue, as you have these questions, to forward them to staff. And what would be the best way for them to get to staff? I know they can come up here and verbally do that, but what would be the best way, city manager, for them to do that?
Certainly, mayor, they could contact my office or Mr. Ferris. He is probably the best contact, Eric Ferris, here at City Hall, and he can make available at the close of the meeting his telephone number. Also, his email address is available, as is mine. So those are probably the best ways, email and telephone.
Okay. So with your thoughts, and if you come up with some other ideas, if you come up with something that you think's a better way, please discuss it with staff. Please let them know, and let's see if there is some other alternative. I don't think we're gonna be able to find one, but we wanna make every possible effort to, and my main concern is that you understand the need for this, in that we have looked at, and we don't see another alternative. But if there is something, we wanna look at it, but I want you to understand what all we've looked at and see why we've said there isn't another alternative at this point. And I wanna help you understand that. Okay?
Thank you, council. Can we, uh, councilor, can we go into executive session on the next item?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're gonna now go into closed session, uh, wait, in accordance to, let me read that right, I'm sorry. In accordance to Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, property acquisition, we'll now convene into, oh, I'm sorry. And, and consultation with attorney, we will now go to closed session.
We'll convene back into regular session, council. We're at item sixteen. Consider and act upon adoption of a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way for the construction, access, and maintenance of certain street improvements, including a cul-de-sac on Cowan Avenue generally located at the KCS railroad intersection, and to undertake all associated drainings, slope, and utility improvements determining the public necessity of such acquisition, authorizing the appointment of an appraiser and negotiator as necessary, authorizing the city manager or her designee to establish just compensation for the property rights to be acquired, authorizing the city manager or her designee to take steps necessary to acquire the needed property rights in compliance with all applicable laws and resolutions, and authorizing the city attorney or her designee to institute combination proceedings to acquire the property if purchase negotiations are not successful, providing for repealing, for repealing savings and severability clauses, and providing for an effective date. Recommendation is that council consider and adopt the resolution set forth in the above caption using the following motion. Councilman Tierney?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to table this to the first meeting in August.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to table to the first meeting in August.
Have a motion by Councilman Tierney to table to the first meeting in August. We're here, second. I'll second. Hey, Councilman Durham, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
We had one vote, is that correct? Oh, both of y'all voted aye? I'm sorry. And nobody else voted?
I vote nay, mayor.
And you're not voting?
I'm pondering this question.
We'll give you 30 seconds, and then we're going to move on.
Nay.
Okay. I'm going to vote in favor. I mean, motion carries. Okay. Bring us down to reports. Gina, Gina, I'm sorry, Nika. Bob. Chief. Linda. Chief. Carol. Gina, now we're to you. At least I didn't call you Nika. I'm sorry. Linda. Mr. Ferris. Mr. Backus. Councilman Durham? Nothing, mayor. Councilman Tierney?
No, sir.
City manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to ask you again. One week from yesterday, I mean, one month from yesterday, is August the 6th. And according to the last report you sent us, which I believe was two days ago, on your major projects, you still had completion date of the park across the street is August 6th. Is that still in tail?
Mr. Backus will be meeting with the contractor and the engineers tomorrow to ascertain whether that date is going to work out.
Okay. If it's not, I would like it to be put on the next agenda as an item.
Yes, sir.
And all the information with it, including all those pictures you've got and everything else.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm getting questions every single day about that thing.
We know. We understand.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilman Ferguson?
Thank you, mayor. MCL Grand Stage Show, Roy Orbison Experience, July 18th. Texas Family Musicals is presenting that. I don't have a time. We have the Medical Center of Louisville continues their Healthy You series. This one is called Breathe Right. It's on July 10th. I think those start at 6:00 PM, and they're in the performance, what do they call that, recital hall, at the MCL Grand. Sounds of Louisville Tuesday evenings. We still have the Mullet Boys tomorrow night, and Fast Lane on the 15th. Those are in the courtyard, and there are various art exhibits going on. You can check up on all of it at MCL Grand, and of course, there are .com, and there's always the Friday Acoustic Jam for free.
Sounds good. Councilman Vaughn, it's sure good to have you back with us, sir, and you're looking mighty well, and I'm glad to hear that, and glad to see you.
Well, I'll tell you, mayor, it feels real good to be back.
I bet it does.
Absolutely.
It's less lonely over here.
Yeah, I'm sure you were lonely. Anyway, nothing, mayor, at this time.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Once again, it is good to have you back.
Thank you.
Counselor? Julie? Officer, once again, it is a privilege to have you here tonight. We appreciate what you do each and every day, sir. Thank you very much. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second. Most adjourned by Councilman Tierney, and second by Councilman Durham. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.